City Commission meeting of Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. But the records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the order of business. Interim City Administrator Carlson, are there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President, no, there is no changes to the order of business.
Okay, there are no changes to the order of business. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Now I'd look for a motion on the order of business. Move to approve. We have a motion to approve the order of business with a second. Any further questions or comments on the order of business? Not all in favor of approving the order of business, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda that commissioners would wish to discuss?
I just had one question for counsel. You've looked at all these agreements?
Yes, I have. There are, do you have a question about, I'd be happy to explain any of the provisions.
No, I didn't have any, I just wanted to make sure legal looked at them all before.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff on the consent agenda? Now I look for a motion on the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Now we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Chair votes aye.
Motion carries on the consent agenda. At this point, Deputy City Administrator, you are relieved of your duties as the acting interim city administrator. Thank you very much for your time and the effort you put in during our selection period. And I'm sure you're a little relieved just to go back into your normal role now, so not wearing dual hats, but thank you very much.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thanks, Linda.
And at this time, I will introduce our new city administrator, Mr. Joe Gah. I would like to introduce him and explain a little bit where Joe has come from. Joe comes from Sheridan, Iowa, where he served as a city manager since March 2014. While there, he was instrumental in improving the city's financial position, oversaw multiple infrastructure improvement projects, was a key player in implementing a comprehensive downtown revitalization effort. Prior to this time in Sheridan, Joe served as the city administrator in Woodbine, Iowa. Like in Sheridan, he was involved in a major downtown Main Street revitalization program, as well as development of a street improvement program. Prior to becoming the city administrator, his career included serving as a parks administrator in Sebastian County, Arkansas, teaching parks and rec courses at the university level and working in a nonprofit sector. Joe began his duties for the city of Dickinson on November 26th, and he'd been getting to know the commission, staff, and community. He is excited about the opportunities here in Dickinson, and he is excited to become an active member of the community. So I'd like to introduce to you our new city administrator, Joe Gah. Mr. Gah, welcome. You have anything you'd like to add?
Just that I'm very excited, last week I met with all the commissioners, and this week we're meeting with the department heads and spent a little time at some meetings in Bismarck, so definitely hit the ground running and enjoying my time here.
All right, well, welcome aboard, and I'm sure you're drinking from the fire hose the first week, so that's all right. We'll move on. We have a couple timetable items, one at five and five-ten, but we'll move into the administration and finance part. And first item up is the fee schedule, and that will be presented by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Before you enclose, you have a fee schedule that these are the changes as of right now. This is a working document, and the fee schedule shows what the new fee would be in 2019 compared to what it was in 18. And upon that, when this was produced, there was a water commission meeting this morning, and due to that, there is going to be an addition onto the fee schedule. And what that is, is a decrease. It'll be a decrease onto the water vendor where we were being charged $22 before. They are doing a decrease to their industrial water, being Southwest Water, down to $12. So we will be decreasing our $29 per thousand down to $19. And if you have any other questions, Director Zeroff would be more than happy to answer on that. But that would be the only other change that I'm asking for on the fee schedule for when the resolution. And upon that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or Mr. Zeroff on any of these changes? Or any staff that is involved in any of the fees? Hearing no questions on the fee schedule, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
And this is Resolution 29 of 2018? Am I correct? So we have a motion to approve 29-2018. Motion approved with a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Now we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the fee schedule. Next item up is a tobacco license for Guru Vape Shop, and that'll be handled by Mrs. Carlson also.
Thank you again, President Decker. This application came in late from the last one, so it is being presented for a 2019 annual license. And this application is compliant with our municipal code and fees, and the fees have been collected, I should state. And staff is recommending approval of the application for this tobacco license, for Guru Vape Shop.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson.
Mr. President?
Mr. Steiner?
Ms. Carlson, was this application late last year also?
That I would not know at this time. I could have read and I checked that out, but...
Is there a late fee? Okay.
I think we discussed this last year, Mr. Steiner, about the late fees.
Okay, we need to do, put a late fee on because, you know, we can handle all these at one time. It costs us money to go back and add late additions and so on. So, Mr. Gah, if you could have a late fee looked at for this, I'd appreciate it. Obviously, we wouldn't do it for this one, but let's put it in for next year's fees.
I think we had discussed that last year. We had multiples last year.
Yes.
I think we had four or five, and two include liquor licenses that were late last year. So. Okay, any other questions on the tobacco dealer license? Now I'd look for a motion on Guru Vape Shop tobacco license.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Now we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the tobacco license. We have an amendment to a liquor license ordinance, and our city attorney, Mrs. Murtha, will be handling that.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. This would be proposed ordinance 1664, and it's amending the alcohol licensing provisions in the city code to add a brewer taproom license. Some of you may recall, I believe it was earlier this year, when a distillery license was added, and the microbrewery license definition was amended. I'd commented then that actually in state code, there was another type of license that was available that the city in the future could adopt, and that was the brewer taproom license, which the difference between the microbrewery and the brewer taproom license may seem slight, but it involves the ability to, again, brew beer on the premises and sell larger quantities of beer, both the kind that would be brewed by the brewmasters, as well as other types of beer. It also has additional privileges, you could say, under state code, such as the ability to attend up to 20 vendor or trade shows and provide those type of presentations with, again, the permission of both the local entity and at the state level, and participate in those, again, those type of events. And so, we've had recent interest in the community for individuals whose business model would benefit from a brewer taproom license. And so, again, it's permitted under state code, and we're bringing it forward to you for your consideration to add this type of licenses to those available within the city.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Murtha? Hearing no questions, I'd look...
Have we discussed a fee for this license?
We have not. So at the time, should it be passed at the second reading, the fee schedule would have to be amended to add a alcohol license fee for this item.
There would be no limit to the amount of these licenses?
Not unless you would like to place one.
Just curious. Okay.
I believe the only licenses that are limited currently is the concession license and the on-off sale licenses.
Any other questions for Mrs. Murtha or staff? And we're not scheduling a public hearing this evening. We'll schedule a public hearing on the second reading.
Yes, we looked at the timetables and thought it would be, work better on the 18.
All right. Any other questions or comments for staff? Now I look for a motion.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the amendment to the license ordinance.
We have a motion to approve?
Okay.
The ordinance with a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on ordinance 1664. We have a memorandum of understanding, DDA and DID, and again, that will be handled by city attorney Murtha.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. This memorandum of understanding, or MOU, has been the subject of much conversation between this entity and the city with regards to the town square project. What is being presented to you is a version that city staff has drafted, and it's my understanding that the DDA, DID also concurs with this language. It essentially sets out with the whereas clauses, a little bit of the history of this project, how it came to be, that there was a recommendation with regards to proceeding, the obligations of the DDA, DID for a capital commitment to the project, the city's obligations as well. And it leaves open, and I'll just highlight this for you, because this question came up earlier today about whether or not this was a possibility. If additional cooperation or collaboration would be permitted in the future under this agreement, let's draw your attention to under section two, the very last sentence of the second paragraph indicates that if the city and the DDA, DID would like to engage in future collaboration with, related to the town square project, and request the DDA to act as the fiscal agent for the city, that that is permitted under this agreement and could be authorized via an amendment to this MOU or any additional agreement, so that future participation is addressed, though not defined. The effective date and termination clause is at the end and indicates that the agreement will be effective on the earlier of either the issuance of a construction RFP by the city for the town square project, or December 31st of 2020, whichever comes first.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Murtha. Any questions?
Mr. President, my question would be, do we want to look at putting in programming of the downtown square as well? I know that's been a part of the discussions, and that's going to be quite a job for whoever has that responsibility. So I think we need to, and Mrs. Schwartz is in the audience, so maybe she can speak to that if they have discussed that at all.
Thank you, President Decker, city commissioners, city staff. There was discussion with Jan about that, and she said, because this MOU is just describing the capital campaign in the building of the square, that we would undergo another MOU, probably at the point of the construction phase, to address that.
And my understanding is that those program services would be actually an agreement for services where the city would be paying the DDA, DID to provide the programming. And so it would be...
Well, yeah, and not necessarily paying, but it would be a contract similar to what you have with the CVB, where you would contract with an entity. Our hope it's the DDA to program the town square.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Well, Mrs. Schwartz is up here. Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Murtha or staff?
Mr. President, I think another thing or issue that we will have to tackle is, and I know the language doesn't necessarily say it in here, but if we as a commission intend on moving forward with this project prior to the $2 million in capital being raised, I think that's an important thing to consider as a board, if that is our intention.
If we were to move ahead and purchase the buildings before they raise their $2 million?
And move forward.
Is that what you're alluding to?
And move forward with construction.
Right.
I think that's something we may not necessarily have to dig into this evening, but it's certainly something we need to speak to.
I know in the past, the discussion, from my understanding, is we weren't going to proceed until the $2 million was in place, so...
And are you suggesting not moving forward purchasing of the buildings as well?
Well, I think we have to wait for price, for one, and then I think we need to have further discussion at that point. But in the past, and Mrs. Carlson can correct me if I'm wrong, but in the past, and Mr. Coopis too, because they've been here kind of through the iteration, and Mr. Hadley and Mr. Steiner, I think we've always talked that we weren't going to proceed until they had raised their $2 million.
That's been the discussion, but, you know, rethinking it, I mean, there's nothing wrong with saying we'll contribute when you meet 25% of your goal, or 50% of your goal, or something like that.
It's a benchmark.
You know, we've all been involved in a lot of big projects in our, you know, over the years, and it seems like once you kick in or you get a good amount of money there from somewhere, it helps to roll the ball on a little faster. And this might be what you're talking about.
I would agree, Mr. or Commissioner Steiner. I would, you know, weigh on the side of caution that I think in order to have a capital campaign, you're going to have, we're going to have to show good faith as a commission. And it's going to be very difficult for them to raise money for a project that isn't seeing any momentum. And I think appraisals are a good start, but it's also private property. So we need to discuss post those appraisals, what our plan of action is, and if we are going to move forward with that property, because, you know, they're not locked into selling it to us either. And so their minds can change quickly. So just something to think about, I think that we're going to need to address sooner rather than later.
And Commissioner Trustum, if I may jump in, under the third sentence, under the city responsibilities under section two, it does indicate that the city in its full discretion can choose to purchase the real property in advance, so there's no need to amend the agreement. It's just the decision rests with you.
And just open discussion.
Okay, any other comments or questions for staff?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the development agreement.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the DDA memorandum of understanding. Next up, we'll have some job descriptions, and Mrs. Nomenick will be, these are all new jobs that we will be posting for the 2019 budget. Am I correct?
All but one.
All but one, okay.
Yes, yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President and commissioners. First up is the risk management specialist and public information officer job description that you have in your packet. This position was scored, and I guess first off, the responsibilities for this position is to coordinate the activities and operations related to loss prevention, our loss control programs, risk management for the city of Dickinson. Will also be, this position will be supervised by the attorney, city attorney, and work closely with administrations, supervisors, employees in all departments. Will be responsible for including, to include coordinating insurance coverage and maintaining claims for all city property and work-related injuries of all personnel. Will also help coordinate media releases of information or events of community importance. So those are kind of the main duties for this position. We have scored the position, and the, as you mentioned, this position was budgeted for 2019 in a grade nine area. We did score it that way. It comes in at a grade nine, 825 points, as an exempt employee. So if you have any questions or concerns about this, we'd be happy to go through that.
And Leva, if I can jump in, Shelley, there is, you've also been provided a, so that you have options. The position description that was provided to you is consistent with the concept of the position that was presented during the budget hearings. However, since that time, there could be different, you know, the thoughts and intents for this position could be done differently. So the one that was provided, again, matches with the concept that was presented during the budget, so the salary is commensurate with that, as is the description of duties. However, if you would like to enhance the role of this position, allocate more funds to the position, narrow it to, there's more than enough work for just the risk safety side of things, not including the public information officer. So if you would like to kind of focus the role of that position in that area and remove those, some suggested language that could be removed or added has been provided to you for your consideration tonight.
Well, I had three concerns when I first read the job description is, and one of was that it was at a grade nine, and I was concerned with the, I think, the employee that we are about to hire for this position needs to take this job very seriously. And they're going to have a lot of responsibility, not only in the day-to-day, the safety arena, but also in the training. They have a lot of departments they have to train. And I want the appropriate person in that job that's going to take this job very seriously. We don't need anyone that's going to just check the box when it comes to safety training. I want them to take this job very seriously. And I brought up, one of my other concerns with staff was about the preparation of the requests for information. I didn't want this position to be overwhelmed with that. And I was assured that this would not be their primary or even secondary job. It would be something they would possibly have to do as part of their role, interaction with insurance companies, the NDRF, and other items. And then I, like I said, I was very concerned with, I guess, the level of, the grade level between nine and 10. What kind of applicant are we going to get for the job that's going to take this? So I've been assured by staff, though, that we have some wiggle room within the nine if we do stay at a grade nine, from if somebody comes in with a higher level of experience, that we can move up the scale if we decide to stay at a nine. Right, Mrs. Carlson, we can, there's...
Yes, there's wiggle room in there, and then if you get very well qualified and you want to add more to the position, that would be considered as a budget amendment at the end of the year, where we would see where it was at.
But my understanding from Mrs. Nomenick, though, is once we advertise it as a grade nine, we can't make an adjustment after we have a applicant that we feel that probably should be at the 10. We'd probably have to wait a year on that, then.
Not necessarily a year, but we'd have to rescore the job description if you want to change it to a different grade and reopen the position.
Okay. Are there any other concerns from commissioners reading through this? My third point that I made with staff, too, is I want this person to be as independent as possible, because they are going to have to make some hard decisions on the job onsite, given the condition, be it a worker-related incident, or a worker's concern, or supervisor's concern, or whomever is contacting them. And they have to have that high level of judgment that they can go in and, if they have to, shut a work site down. So they have to be as independent as possible.
So, President Decker, then I have a couple questions for you. You said that you did not want the request for information to be an essential duty, then do you want that removed from the job description because it is listed as an essential duty?
I saw how overwhelmed the department was with requests for information this past fall. I don't want this position to be distracted from their day-to-day duty because they're trying to fulfill that need, say in two years again, and we're in an election cycle and we're going through all this again. So that's my primary concern, is I don't, I want them to maintain their ability to be that risk management specialist and the PIO without having to worry about having to fulfill that need. So, yes, if it needs to be moved out of the essential duties, I would, but I guess my concern is how much it adjusts on the score.
That won't change the score.
Okay. I don't know if any of the other commissioners are concerned with it or not, so I haven't heard anything.
So, on the revision, one of these is removing the PIO portion?
That is your direction.
So this would be just a safety officer or a safety position, basically? I mean, is it necessary this person to be the PIO?
Well, we haven't had one in the past, so I don't know if it's a necessity, but... Mr. Gah?
That was something staff discussed, and I think is, they advised me, it kind of came up during the budgeting cycle to make it fit. I don't know that it fits within this position or not. If, direction for me, I don't know that it needs to be in there.
That's kind of where I'm going, I guess, with it myself, is, I mean, safety and public information officer, I mean, it just doesn't make, I mean, his duties, or his or her duties, I should say, would be more, and making sure, you know, we're following OSHA and our safety stuff. I mean, the PIO basically could be Mr. Gah, I mean...
Essentially, it has to be, is part of it, and it can be whoever else. We've talked about, maybe with some of these specific incidences, then they can be a little bit more frontline in types of situations.
Well, we even act as commissioners sometimes as PIOs, so...
Necessarily wanting to, but we do. Just, I mean, I would...
And I'm fine with that, too, as commissioners.
I think it's an important enough position that we don't need to split it up into too many...
So, Mrs. Nomenick, if we would decide to remove the public information officer from this job description, would you need to go in and rescore this?
You know, I don't see that that would be an issue when I looked at the scoring factors. A four-degree under relationship is where we have it scored, and the definition says that they would be, likely be involved in media-related activities and background work information gathering. A five D says that they would be contacted, definitely would be their job, they'd be contacted directly by media and may make statements. So I think likely being is fine for a four D. I think it's something that members of our management team, public works managers, those sort of positions, would be a four D in that area. I don't think we'd have to change the scoring on that.
You'd be comfortable leaving it at a nine, then, removing the PIO?
My other question to you was, you mentioned that you wanted them to have the highest judgment decision-making. We don't have it scored that way.
Okay, and that would be, that would be a six, you have it as a?
It would be a five, and we have it as a four.
Okay. I know we have a, in, in the third column here, we have it as a five, judgment decision.
That was the original version. I just put that on there for a reference for you to see where it was when Chief Seabuck and BCA Carlson had given their recommendations. They had it at a five, and then when Ms. Murtha tried to get it back into a grade nine, that's when that got changed.
I would say if the Commissioners are comfortable with the grade nine as it is right now, being assured by staff what the exact duties are going to be, I'm, I'm comfortable leaving it at a grade nine to begin with.
I think I'm fine with that also.
Okay. Any other questions on the Risk Management Specialist, as it's now going to be called?
May I also request, I'm sorry, that the, the second to last bullet point under essential duties, probably because we're going to focus on the safety side, the coordination reviews, media releases, that that can come out of essential duties, not to say that it might not happen, and, but...
It won't be an essential duty. We'll leave that up to Mr. Gah and, and Mrs. Carlson and yourself. So we have an amended job description. Are, are you comfortable with us approving it as, with the suggestions, Mrs. Nomenick?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions for Mrs. Nomenick? If not, I'd look for a motion on the amended job description.
Mr. President, move to approve the amended job description as presented.
Second. I have a motion to approve the amended job description. Second. Any further comments or questions for staff? We'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Job description is approved with amendments, and the motion is passed. Mrs. Nomenick, we're going to have to have you come back up. We have a five o'clock timetable, and we have a presentation from Mr. Hadley and Mrs. Fair on an urban grant writing project.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're here tonight, staff would like to leverage some of the money that you're devoting to improving the downtown and the city and obtain grants. I've been visiting off and on with Ms. Fair on, on different grant opportunities. Got to visit with you all briefly on just one option, and I think Deputy City Administrator Carlson has some ideas of, of funding. She can explain it much better than I can as far as where it would come from. But with that, we'd like to just pursue, start pursuing some grants specifically for the downtown, maybe branch out at a later date. We would bring each one of those to you to look at and review prior to moving forward. Ms. Fair is here to explain her process. She would actually write and administer the grants for us, with my help in coordinating, obviously with Ms. Carlson and staff here. So with that, I guess Ms. Fair could maybe present her process and what she could do to help, and I think it's a good opportunity for us to leverage some of that, some of those funds that you've already dedicated to improving Dickinson.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Chris Fair. I am the Director of Western Wellness Foundation. We most recently received the National Endowment for the Arts Grant for the mural that you see on the underpass. So that's why I'm here, as Mr. Hadley and I were talking, and before that, I was working with Mr. Kessel, talking about different options of how, how different things could be done. And I'm not sure, is everyone really familiar with how grants work? Do you want me to talk a little bit about that, or you think I'll pretty much know how grants work? A little bit? I call, I call grants free money.
It's a little refresher.
Yeah, okay. So I call grants free money. It's not really free because you do have to do something in order to get the money, but it's grants, it's money that you don't have to pay back. You do have to do the project. So most grants are competitive, which means that you're competing with other projects and other organizations for a finite pot, pot of money, and there's no guarantee that any proposal that's prepared would be successful. So usually, that organization sends out a request for proposals. It takes quite a while for grant writers to research what that granting source wants, you know, what are they interested in funding, and then turning around and finding a project that would go with it. So example, the mural is a good example, one small example where we knew that Mr. Kessel was, would like to have a mural on the underpass, and so we started looking around for art grants, and we happened to find one, and then it was going back to putting all the parameters together of what that project would look like. So there's background, there's history, there's timelines and a budget and other things. And once you've done that work, even though you may, may or may not get the grant, it's not wasted time or money because you can use that for other grants. You've already done a lot of the work. So Walter and I have been discussing some additional projects that we think would maybe, would fit with some of the city commission's priorities. There's, there's one that we are looking at, some could be submitted as early as January. But of course, that's all up to the city commission and your priorities. There's a couple of missed opportunities that just kind of went by. One of them would be for underpass restoration or streetscape, and that was $200,000. That was, that's due December 31st. I'm not sure that we really have time to put that together, but we could look into it. There was another grant that would have paid for Main Street lighting, landscaping, signage, facade improvements, et cetera. That was up to $300,000. That was due December, or November 5th. So you see those grants are out there, you just have to go look for them. Probably both of those will come around again in a year. One thing you should think about, unless you have capacity within your staff to really focus on writing a grant, outsourcing grant writing works pretty well. Your staff is, of course, the project director and is always driving and overseeing everything, then the grant is prepared and submitted, your grant writer, writer is always paid whether or not the grant is successful. Something else, Walter, you want me to address, or does, do you have questions?
I think the only other one, thank you, Chris, the, the only other one that was top on the list that we were discussing was gateways. I, I think we've talked about gateways in this community for a long time. It was talked about, I think, long, long before I was here. There, there is some opportunities that we can actually work with urban forestry, we can work with many of the departments here, go out, identify locations for that and, and get that moving forward because there are some grants that, that we can do. There's also some planning grants that Chris, maybe you could outline, maybe the, I don't know the scopes of all of those, but you know, if we want to do some outdoors, some of the, the information that I shared with you before the meeting on just an option of a grant that we could do, we could have a planning grant to develop that, to develop a plan that we could share with the community and get input and whatnot and move, move them forward prior to submitting the grant. So there, there are timelines that, that, you know, are pretty strict, and, you know, we've missed some, obviously, this year, but we really would like to try to leverage your money and try to get more for it, for the City of Dickinson, if, if we can, and if you guys are willing. So I guess, I, I would like to have some direction of, if you would like to see that move forward, and then I can actually help because Chris has volunteered her time to meet with me, I don't know how many times we met, but I think she's getting tired of me.
He never brings cookies or anything, or coffee.
Well, any questions for Mr. Hadley or Mrs. Fair?
Mr. President, I would recommend potentially putting a subcommittee together that can work with Mr. Hadley and Mrs. Fair on a vision and a direction and what grants would be better served for this community, and then maybe bringing that forward to the board. Think we could get farther in the process by doing that. Maybe yourself and another Commissioner.
Well, I was, I was gonna also ask, since we are spending the people's money, and you said the grant writer gets paid, is it an agreed-upon fee, you get a percentage out of the grant, do we negotiate upfront with you?
You can negotiate, yeah, you, I mean, fees are always negotiable. You don't really get a percentage of the grant that's, for federal grants, of government grants, that's illegal, so you can't do it that way. So really, you just, you just pay upfront. My view is keep track of the hours you spend, and you get paid for that time. If you get the grant, great. If you don't get the grant, the grant writer hasn't wasted their time. So essentially, you're, you're hiring someone to prepare that for you. Besides me, I have two contracted grant writers that work with me, so I have a lot of capacity. We charge $50 an hour. Another one that I just saw that I work with, they've charged 65 an hour. It just, it kind of depends what your, what the scope of your project and things are.
I, I wouldn't be opposed to forming a, a subcommittee to sit down and, and craft that, that vision with Mr. Hadley, so. I think we, yeah, I think we can come up with a couple of Commissioners and, and some staff members. I know staff's busy, but if we can get some grant money.
And sometimes there is no match at all required. So that's, those are the ones we really want to go for. President?
I just wanted to state that if there is city matches, we did set up the Interest Revenue Fund for urban forestry, public art, so we would have that bucket that we could work with as far as part of the matches. There is a cap on that amount, but that, I wanted to bring that up. What we've used in the past is the 30% of the 1% before, but we usually try to budget it.
Okay. I think we'll, we'll go ahead and move forward with, with this and set up that subcommittee. We'll get some, we'll get, find out which Commissioners can fit it in to their schedule. We'll sit down with you, Mr. Hadley, and maybe we'll get a few more staff members to participate, and we might even have some community members that might be interested.
I'll just, if it gets set up as a committee, the, the members have to be designated at a meeting.
Okay. I don't think we can designate tonight, I don't think we're ready, but we will move in that direction, Mr. Hadley, so I have limited direction for you.
Nope, that's, that's great, sir, you just let me know when we want to get together.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next timetable agenda, and that is a 5:10 presentation by Dickinson Public Schools, and we have Superintendent Hawker here. Welcome.
Thank you. All right, is this a clicker? All right, make sure I know how to work that. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the commission. I was asked to come and, and present to you tonight and just give you little updates on the, the school district as a whole, and then talk specifically on a couple of topics that I think are very front of everybody's mind, and, and that has to do with the, the high school project situation there and, and potentially elementary. So I've thrown together a quick little slideshow, I believe you have some, some handouts. I'll go through a lot of these pretty quick. My intent is to make sure I cover the slides thoroughly, but to make sure I leave some time at the end of this presentation for you to ask any questions, and I'll do my best, after being here five months, to answer those questions. So let's see, where do I point this? Oh, there we go. Did it just work? It did. Just make sure I didn't skip anything. Okay. District's vision and mission, I think we can kind of move right past that, but it is focused on all learners. Here's a quick slide of our, of our school board. One new board member that came on board this summer in June, and that is Mrs. Michelle Orton. Great board that we have. Here is a, kind of an organizational slide of the school district, and everything that you see there in red, those are all new leadership to the district. So there, there is a lot of newness in the district, and basically, that's just what I wanted to point out on this, on this slide. Assistant Superintendent Keith Harris is with me today here in the audience, and the rest are all new principals in, in the schools here in town. Just a quick highlight of all the schools that we run, six elementaries, the Adult Learning Center, the Early Childhood Center, of course, an alternative school, the high school, middle school, lots of campuses, lots of students, about 4,000, just approaching 4,000 students and, and just a little bit south of 700 employees. So again, just a quick breakdown. It's interesting to note, we have 165 English-language learners speaking 27 different languages in our schools, so you can imagine that that poses a few challenges. Just a quick highlight of a couple of the buildings in the district, so that you kind of know what's going on in those buildings, and that helps explain kind of our future direction. So the, the Hagan Building, it's where currently, right now, we're running several different administrative programs. We run our alternative school there. You can see there, we've got our after-school programs, our school psychologists are housed there, several different programs there. That building was last added on to in 1991. All right, Berg as well, you know that that just went through a remodel this summer, has a, just short a couple hundred students in it this year. Fifth graders will be joining that school next year. Hart River, current enrollment 260, Roosevelt, 280, 281. Jefferson, I'll just kind of jump through these real quick. Lincoln. Prairie Rose, our, our current largest school. Here's some enrollment trends that you, I thought you'd find interesting. Through elementary school, grade five, you can just see a continual growth there from 2009 to, to this fall. We, we are, are definitely continuing to, to attract elementary students. Here's a number of classrooms in our, in our district. We essentially have currently about 105 school classrooms. We currently, the maximum capacity in those classrooms is just over 2,000. That's with an assumption of kindergartens at 20 students and fifth grade at 25 and one student in between at each grade level. And there's our, a quick snapshot here later, earlier this month, showing that we're, we're literally just a couple hundred students away from, from maximum capacity in our current facilities. The middle school, of course, you know that that bond referendum just passed a few years ago, and that new school's there, and we're in our second year of that school. That school was built for about 1,100 students, and, and we're currently sitting at just over 850 students. And here's a, an enrollment trend of the middle school, again, a continual positive enrollment growth. And the high school. Again, the school was built to serve 1,000 students. It was built back in 68, was with the, the most recent addition in 97, and we currently have 1,015 students in the school. And there's the enrollment trend data of the high school specifically, again, showing a little dip there in 2012, 13, down at our low of 747 and, and up to the 1015 today. So the, the big questions and the big talking points for tonight, what's the future plans of the district? What are we working on, and, and what would be super important for this, this body here tonight to, to know a little bit more about and be able to ask some questions? So, so that's this slide. We are anticipating needing to go to the community and ask for a, a bond referendum vote this spring. We are anticipating sometime in the week of April 8th as that, as that date. Within the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to fine-tune that, that time, and then, of course, as you know, by, by February, we have to have that, that date exactly identified. We are anticipating needing to ask the question to focus on a new elementary school as well as the new high school. We, we also just wanted to share with you tonight a little bit about some, some busing discussions that we're having in town that I think could help out the town and, and help out with some traffic flow, so just wanted to talk briefly about that as well. So, so the high school. Here's, well, let me, let me start with the elementary school, actually. So, so the, the school district did purchase some land, as you probably are aware, but they... they own next to the, uh, just east of the middle school, there's, there's a field in between, um, but there's, uh, approximately a hundred and fourteen acres there that the school district does own. That potentially could be a good location for a, a new elementary school. We, uh, in fact, are just now in conversations with an outside agency to help us do a, an evaluation, a study as to, to what would make sense, um, in, in regards to the best location for a new school. Um, as you very well know also, the district just last year, um, kinda went to more of a, an attendant zone, um, neighborhood school concept rather than, uh, having kids going all over the place, all over town, which, which I think certainly will help out with traffic, we're kind of in our, our final year of that transition, the district, uh, last year did make the decision to let last year's fourth graders, this year's fifth graders stay in whatever elementary school they were currently in so that they didn't feel like they had to bounce too many schools, and so we still do have a fair amount of traffic running across the whole district, uh, maybe going to an elementary school, but a lot of, a lot of folks did decide to have their parent, have their students stay, um, within the, uh, the, the, the new up and coming boundaries assigned to that neighborhood. So we're, we're gonna conduct a study to determine kinda the location of that elementary school, what makes sense, but we certainly know that it, it appears there's a lot of growth in that, uh, northwest corner of the, of the city, um, that looks like there's a lot of, uh, of home expansions that I can see, uh, across the, across the way in that field just north, and so it, it may very well be a, a good location, so we're gonna, we're asking the, the company RSP to, to do an evaluation on that. So, so the high school discussion, what brings us to, uh, potentially where we're at today and, and, uh, what we're potentially, uh, looking at improving? Well, obviously student safety is, um, for me, the very first and foremost concern that I have with our existing campus, um, literally speaking, um, although we do our very best to make sure we can monitor, um, who comes in and out of the building, um, simply by the fact that we have, uh, campus, um, buildings detached from one another, um, it, it creates a, a challenge, it creates a potential risk, um, from a student safety perspective. We also have a building that's very old, um, in fact, the, the condition of the building's continually failing and we've gotta just make a decision whether we wanna invest the, the necessary dollars to keep that building going or whether, whether it's worth it and we wanna go a different direction. And we've had, uh, four workshops thus far, um, with, um, many community members, many , uh, subcommittee, um, groups, working to help kinda finalize some information and on December thirteenth, so if this was meeting, if this meeting was in two weeks, I would have a whole lot more information to give you, but on December thirteenth, um, all that work kinda gets funneled down and shared out amongst a, uh, a, a select committee in that, of that group so that we can start to move forward and, and, and be able to share out specific details and, and specific, uh, functions and focuses that we're looking at in that, in that, uh, district, in that building. Because again, we, we also know that, uh, the, the boiler that's in that, in that building is super old, um, it's, it's, uh, there's two boilers in that school and they're pretty much the last two boilers in the country, um, and so if we, uh, to, to fix those boilers and keep them rolling, um, is nearly impossible and to replace those boilers, um, alone would, would, uh, would approach a million dollars just, just to, to bring in and, and put in some new boilers, so. So we've gotta look at that and then of course, we, we know the facility capacity, we're, we're already over capacity, the school was built for a thousand, it was also built back in a day where there was different programming for students, different, uh, course options, and so today with, uh, different focuses on technology, special ed, um, just different avenues to, to educate our students, um, we, we're over capacity already and we know it's gonna take a couple of years to build a school and, and the, the students are coming. If you, if you look at our, at our growth patterns in our district, it's a very, very good pyramid scenario, which is, which is really good, we don't have a lot of bubbles at, at different grade levels, it's a true pyramid, our elementary grade levels are, are significantly bigger than our secondary grade levels. Last year we graduated approximately a hundred and ninety high school seniors, this year we took in approximately three hundred and sixty-two-ish, I think, kindergartners, so huge swing, um, and those, those kindergarten, uh, enrollment numbers tie right in to five year ago, five-year-old birth rates here in Dickinson, um, it's, we've got the data that's showing somewhere between seventy-five to eighty-five percent of every, uh, every birth, um, five years later shows up in kindergarten. So that's really concerning to us, um, from a facility perspective, knowing that the last couple of years here in Dickinson, we've had over s, approximately seven hundred births, um, I can easily do the math at eighty percent and, and you're, you're talking a lot of, a lot, you're in the five hundred range of, of potential kindergartners coming in and, and today we, we're having about three hundred and sixty, so the, the numbers are, are certainly there, um, as I showed you on one of the slides, we have just over a hundred, um, classrooms, a hundred and five classrooms, um, literally if we took three kids out of every classroom in our current situation, we could fill an entire new school just from those three and if you were to ask our, many of our courses, many of our sections, our kindergarten first and fifth grades, they're, they're, uh, very full today, they're, they're, they're big, so the teachers of course would love to be able to, to get back down to that twenty-five-ish number instead of twenty-eight-ish number and, and so we, we know that we've gotta do something to address that, but I'm, I'll, I'll remain my focus here on the high school as well, so we're already at capacity. And then the other big bullet point, um, for that high school and what we're, what we're looking at is specifically the, the educational programming, what, what do we need to do for the, for our students today to, to help better prepare them for, for success? And, and that's the need for, uh, obviously focusing on our twenty-first century skills, um, our high school principal is, uh, is, is really focused in looking at, uh, kind of, um, putting together an academy slash CAPS program at the high school, which we've had some great, um, involvement from several of our manufacturing organizations in town that would really like to see that. We've had, uh, um, a few conversations with, uh, President Mittel and, and Dickinson State University in regards to, uh, how to kinda tie that in with some, um, technical training and we feel like there's some, some great avenues. Our programs are just very limited today, um, for in, for instance, we have a, uh, uh, kind of a CNA nursing program at the high school where we, we have fifty percent more students that want into the program than we can get into the program and, and, uh, as I get older, I definitely want healthcare available in, in where I live and I, I need these folks to, to continue on with that education, so if we could expand that program, we could, uh, we could really help meet our needs here in the community even a little bit better. So, so with that high school, advance to the next slide here, the, uh, the committee has currently evaluated kinda three options. Um, the first option was to renovate the existing school, um, take the high school, renovate it, get it up to speed, be able to, uh, change the programming into kinda the, some of the things that we were looking at doing. The, the option B there in the middle was kind of a mix, do a little bit of remodeling, a little bit of new stuff and, and option C, um, is, is to, to do new and, and not do much in a renovation of the existing building. Through, through, uh, some initial price estimates, um, as you know, the school board did hire a construction manager at their last board meeting in November, so, so that, that, uh, construction manager will, will help verify these numbers, but in, in essence, as you can see, I know on this slide it's awfully dark, but in fact, I can't even read it, so I'm gonna have to go off my memory, so don't quote me on this, but I, I believe option A is still sitting a little over a hundred million dollars to just remodel that school and bring it up to speed, whereas option C, you could build brand-new for hardly anymore, hundred and two to maybe a hundred and fifteen, seventeen-ish, um, and, and so even though those numbers are one hundred percent right now, just, just estimates and, and our CMAR will, will really fine tune those numbers, what it, what it re, what it, uh, reconfirmed to the committee is that, and unless you're within fifty, sixty percent, maybe seventy percent of the cost of remodel versus the cost of new, um, you never get the bang for your buck, you never get the life expectancy, um, i- it's just not financially a sound decision to go through remodels and if any of you have ever remodeled your house or your kitchen or anything, you also know you often run, times run into, to surprises and, and those surprises even cost additional dollars. Um, we also know that with any option number A or B, we have the, the additional challenge of figuring out how to maintain school and keep, uh, educating our students over a couple year period of time while we're remodeling. Option C allows us to continue to do that, um, with relatively, um, little additional expense and, and keep kids in the school and then, uh, build, build next door. So, so that is kind of where we're, where the committee right now is, is leaning more towards is option C and as I said, on December thirteenth, that morning, um, we've got a fairly lengthy meeting, um, scheduled that day with, uh, various leaders across the, the community as well as our architect to, uh, kinda filter all that down and, and walk away with, uh, a, a more defined approach to what the district will be doing next. The, uh, the, the tax levy information I just wanted to share with the district because of course, if anybody's like me, we already pay enough taxes. Um, currently right now here in Dickinson, you can see for two thousand and eighteen, uh, school district will be at a hundred and nine, uh, mills, that's kind of a capture there within the last, uh, five years. Overall mills are, are relatively steady from two thirty-four to two thirty-three over that time period. As a, at, looking at where does Dickinson Public Schools rate amongst the state in similar-sized school districts, um, in regards to their levy comparison, with, with the debt included in there, um, we're, we're kind of right in the middle, you can see us at a hundred and eight percent from, and the, and Fargo at the top and Devil's Lake at the, at the bottom. If you take the debt out, which the only debt the school district has is the, the middle, the current middle school, um, if you take that out, you can see Dickinson's at the very bottom of the current levy by taking everybody else's debt out as well. So we, the, the district's done a, a good job of being very, very smart with their money and using savings to build elementary schools and things like that and we want to continue in that approach. So just wanted to share that out as well. And then talk just a titch about transportation and then hopefully have some time for, uh, for you to ask some, some questions. So, transportation as well, we are, um, in the process of evaluating our, our transportation focus in the district, um, and our plan is to have a proposal, um, presented to the school board, um, for potential implementation next year. And that plan includes perhaps creating an additional even better service for our busing than we currently have right now. Right now we do have about a thousand students riding the bus and you can see we cover a whole lot of miles and all that stuff, um, but we also have a large, um, section of town that is in the restriction zone for all high school students, for instance, that don't get the ability to get on a bus. And so consequently, we either have a lot of high school kids driving to school, which if you've been anywhere near that high school in the morning at eight o'clock, you'll witness, or we have a lot of parents taking their freshmen and sophomores who don't have driver's licenses to school, um, and so what we wanna do is create more, since we've gone to a neighborhood concept for, uh, attendant zones for, for kids to go to school, do the same similar approach with busing so that we can have some kinda neighborhood busing, so we, we are looking at that, we're looking at, uh, shrinking that, uh, restriction zone so that, uh, you know, maybe kids at the high school, maybe it's legit that they can walk two, three, four, five blocks, I, I don't know, I don't wanna say any numbers and be held to anything, but, you know, it seems reasonable that they can walk some, um, even in the winter months, but certainly not walk from here to the high school, that's, that's not, that doesn't make sense to me, um, and, and right now, they, they're, they're in the restriction zone, so. So we're, we're gonna put together a study to see, could we, could we create more, uh, a little smaller non-restriction zones around each elementary school where kids are kind of attending those neighborhood schools and then provide a better service for those that live around those schools and do the same thing with the, uh, the middle school and the high school to potentially allow for more riders to, to take advantage of, of the busing situation, which again, I think would be important to the city to, uh, potentially help alleviate a little bit of, uh, traffic on our, on the roads, which I've heard from many that, that would be a very appreciative, so we are certainly going to look at that to see what, uh, can kinda come out of that, to help us, uh, help us provide a better service for, for busing for, for our patrons. And essentially, that's the presentation that I put together for you and again, thank you and I wanted to just, uh, save a little time, um, in case anybody had any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Hawker? I know I have been, uh, included in, in multiple meetings at the high school, I, I like the direction that they are headed, um, this is probably a discussion that should've been at this level a couple of years ago, but now you've inherited it, so, um, I think you're doing a, a very good job, you know, with the cards you're dealt right now and, um...
Thank you.
Though, though, the numbers are almost staggering when you, when you think about it and I know I asked this question of you and, and the, and the principal at the last meeting we were at, that right now, um, uh, numbers weren't given how big the high school is, they're looking at building a high school that's roughly sixteen hundred, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
Sixteen hundred students, it'll be the largest high school in the state of North Dakota. Um, and I asked them, and he can confirm this, I said, are you comfortable at sixteen hundred? Because if you look at these numbers, seven hundred live births a year in this area and if seventy to eighty percent, we're talking five hundred plus classes, so, I think that'll all be in part of the, the consideration, but, uh, right now, um, I'm very encouraged that, you know, as a community, we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you.
Especially the, the school district, uh, providing top-notch education for our students.
Thank you very much, we agree and we are really appreciative of everybody's input, um, it, it, it absolutely helps, cause we, we can't do this without it, so, um, we really, we really appreciate that. They're, they're back to your sixteen hundred, you're exactly right, um, that's about the largest school in the state, there are now two thousand, um, student high schools in the state, so I think, uh, as we potentially would approach sixteen hundred, then there would be a whole lot of discussion in the community whether, uh, you wanna add on to that to make it a two thousand school or if it's time to have a second high school in, in, in Dickinson, so, um, the good news is, those are discussions that we hope we can have a little later than, than today and, and right now, just make sure that we, we don't undersize build the school, we need to make sure that we're, we're capable of addressing the growth that's coming, but certainly not oversize as well and, and have an empty school for many, many years, um, we, we need to plan it right and it's, there's a, there's a lot of work that goes into that, but we're very excited and optimistic about the future and, and, uh, looking forward to, to many, many opportunities to interact with the community and, and get valuable input and, and make right decisions.
I just had one question, I see where you're back to the current location for the high school, for the new high school, how, how did that decision, at one time we had heard it was gonna move?
So, my understanding, so this is one of the questions I think I can answer, but was obviously outside of my time here, my understanding, there was a significant survey conducted last spring and overwhelmingly ninety percent of the, the respondents on that survey, and it was a very large turnout of the survey, I don't recall exactly, but, um, maybe a thousand-plus people, um, they were all adamant that, uh, that school, um, that we really do our very best to try to keep it on location and, and I, I can say as kind of a new guy in town, um, it's, it is a, uh, I think either, either any location would be, would certainly be great, but there are great benefits with, uh, the rec center being across one street and the university being across another, it just creates some very unique, uh, tied opportunities that, uh, lots of campuses never have. And so although we are a little restricted on that campus site and, and we wanna make sure our footprint is proper so that we can still make, uh, the best advantage of, of everything on that campus, um, we've been heard loud and clear that we've gotta make sure we address those softball fields and we can't lose those, um, we've gotta do something and, and absolutely we wanna do that, um, but we think we can, um, work that out and that's, that's what, we'll, we'll get some of that information on the December thirteenth meeting and then we'll start sharing that out right after the holidays.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions or comments?
Doctor Hawker, is the meeting on the thirteenth public?
It is, right now it's not because we're, we're trying to filter that down, so I, there will be public there, um, the ones that have kind of attended and been part of this planning process, um, it will, they will be there, um, they're, well, at least they're invited to come and then as soon as that, that group kinda says yes, this is, this is our thought process and what we're looking at, then, then will, the gates will be wide open and we'll start to have, as, we've had several large community input opportunities already, this just meeting is, is specifically kinda to share out, yes. Thank you, good question, but we'll keep you all in the loop as we move forward.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Well again, thank you very much for this opportunity now, heading back to the high school and watch the Dickinson basketball kickoff tonight, so.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have Mrs. Nomenek back up, we have three more, uh, positions.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners, the next job description is the legal assistant position and this also is a new position for two thousand and nineteen, was approved with our budget. This position will provide primary administrative assistance to the city attorney and will assist with legal research, correspondence and record-keeping. This position was scored out at four hundred and fifty points, will fall in class two, grade two, and will be a, an hourly non-exempt employee. Any questions with this one? Any questions with this one?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the legal assistant? Hearing no questions, I would look for a motion on the legal assistant.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the legal assistant position.
Second.
For the second. Any further discussion or questions on the legal assistant? Hearing no votes, Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, job description is preparator for the museum.
Can I say thank you before you do?
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes, the next position is fossil preparator. The fossil preparator is responsible for overseeing and conducting laboratory-based preparation of fossil remains, will assist with mentoring lab volunteers and training, communicating paleontological science with the public. This position was scored out and at 350 points, will fall in Class I, Grade I, and will be a non-exempt hourly employee. Any questions about this one?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the fossil preparator?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the position. Any further questions or comments? Hearing no votes, vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And the last one is a water reclamation facility operator.
So, this position is not a new position of sorts, and when we built and created the water reclamation facility, we were not quite sure how the whole organizational structure was going to work with that, and so we kept the water operator as one position. We have multiple different operators, and so they were sharing one job description, and we felt that this position is so different from what the water utility operator does that it should have its own job description. So, that is why we have created a new job description. We, this position will still do the same functions that it was doing, will be responsible for inspecting and performing medium-to-complex operations, maintenance, repair activities in and on public works, facilities, and equipment in the water reclamation facility. The position scored the same as the water utility operator, will remain at 450 points, so no change to the grade or class that this position will be in.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on this position? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the water reclamation facility operator position.
A motion to approve?
Second.
For the second. Any further questions or comments for Mrs. Nomenek on this position? Hearing no votes, Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on this job description. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have multiple reports. First one up is city-defined contribution retirement plan amendment, and that will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This report is just to let you know a few of the things that we've been working on with the change that we asked during the budget process, and it was approved to go with the state and DEPERS, and working with Attorney Murtha, we have some, had an email that was sent to us on what we can and can't do on some of the triggering points with our new plan. So, I just kind of wanted to bring this forward to you, and with that, some of the changes are that our contribution rate would change from 5% to 7%. That would both be employer and employee on that, and that was, it's mandatory. It would give participants the opportunity to opt out of the city-defined contribution plan and join the North Dakota State PERS plan as of the first of the year, but once participants have elected to opt out, they cannot return back to. So, if they want to stay in the DC plan at this time and opt out of the North Dakota State plan, it's not that they can go, you know, change their mind either on either, either way. So, if they go into the state, they can't go back to the DC plan either. Also, this will, we needed to discuss a triggering point because the opportunity to, in the North Dakota State plan, is that you can buy credit services. So, with that, if you have a DC plan, we would allow for a transfer of all or a portion of the DC plan balance for the purpose of purchasing service credits for, in the state plan, and this amount is limited to only what is needed. So, if you have that, you can purchase a year for $20,000 and your balance is $30,000, $10,000 would stay in the plan. You can only take what is required by the state for the service plan, so that would be initiated by the state by giving you a balance on that. The other question was, is, that participants had was the fact that if they have a DC plan, could they transfer the defined contribution plan to a 457 plan with that? And no, that it came back as the city's DC plan will not be amended to allow participants to roll over their balance in the DC plan to another qualified retirement plan such as 457 or a 403 plan or an IRA, because our plan originally was documented that you have to be terminated or retired from the city before you can do an actual withdrawal from the DC plan. So, with that, we will be coming forward. We, as Attorney Murtha, has worked on amendments with the new plan. Once we get things going, I just wanted to give a report of some of the new things that we have options to, and I will allude to Attorney Murtha if you have anything else that you would like to share with that.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or Mrs. Murtha on this plan?
Just, are we communicating this well with the staff on all these? Is there some complications here with people that have been here for a while?
So, the proposed amendments haven't changed the message that has been provided to the staff through the various trainings. There, we knew that service purchases would be permitted. What happens to the remaining balance has been a question area. So, as we get that document finalized, we are sending, we are going to be sending this information out to the staff, and we did also confirm with ENDE-PERS that if, for some reason, any of this information would impact their decision to join ENDE-PERS, they still have the opportunity prior to January 1 to say, "Well, maybe I want to stay in the DC plan." So, we have gone through though, and during the open enrollment period, and collected all of the information from employees about what their preference is with regards to transitioning.
And the information as it's disseminated, is it going, are we sending individual emails to each employee?
No. So, the training information has been, and I might defer to Deputy Administrator Carlson on this. We had in-person trainings that were mandatory for all departments, and then we also had a subsequent training where we had a individual from ENDE-PERS do, come and provide via, I'm going to not use...
Web conference.
Web conference, thank you, to answer those questions, and I believe some of them were taped.
Yes.
And then available to employees to look at.
Yes, that's correct. We did have, we did video it so that it could be provided, and then we've been constantly giving the information from ENDE-PERS website, that, that whole web conference PowerPoint and everything is on, online so that they can go through that too.
So, who, at what point do they find out what it's going to take to buy years of service? I mean, what, how many dollars to buy a year? So, how does that portion work?
So, technically, they, they can't, because the quote is going to be different for every employee, because it's going to be based on, the way the ENDE-PERS plan is structured, it's, the service purchase amount is based on your position, your income, and your age, which, and, and once you get a service purchase quote, it's only good for a limited amount of time. I believe it's three months, and after that, because you get older, you have to then reapply if you don't execute that service purchase. ENDE-PERS has indicated that they also need one to two months of, preferably two, salary on the books, so no one can get a quote from them until they're with PERS for at least two months. So, they can't make a service purchase until their third month within the system.
Any other questions for Mrs. Murtha or Mrs. Carlson? All right, thank you for that report. Next item up is a report on the 2019 commission meeting schedule and a discussion.
Thank you, President Decker. What I'm coming out with, we did the calendar for 2019 on the commission dates, and just a little history on that, in February of 2017, it was the commission's request and voted on that we change from the first and third Monday of each month to the first and third Tuesday of each month, and because of the holidays and things that come forth. In looking at the 2019 calendar, there is only one month that we have conflict with the holidays, and I am requesting and asking if we can move in January from the first and third Tuesday of the month to the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, since there are five Tuesdays in that month. So, it would be January 8th and the 22nd, then we would have commission meeting in January, so that when we produce the budget book and we put in the meetings request and we publish the commission meetings that are to be held, we have them all set and ready to go.
You don't want to meet on New Year's Day, or?
I'm fine with it.
Or the day out.
Bring in the new year.
I guess my only question is, have we determined when our budget dates are?
Not at this time. I have not done any budget dates. I was waiting for the new city administrator and to go to that first.
I don't see any major issues with the dates that are scheduled right now, unless Commissioners And I think the one in July on the 2nd, I think that's fine. It won't interfere that much with the fourth, the fourth holiday, so. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or Mr. Gah for, on this? Do you need us?
I would like a motion on this.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the...
Move to approve, Mr. President.
All right, we have a motion to approve the commission meeting schedule for 2019 by Mr. Steiner. Any further discussion, comments, questions? All in favor of approving the commission meeting schedule for 2019, state aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? The motion passes, so we'll go with those dates. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
And then we'll look forward to the budget dates as soon as possible, so we can program those in.
And we can make them shorter.
We also have a landfill site study, the special date.
Thank you. With this, according to the commission's request, we wanted to set up a landfill site study special date to be able to bring everybody together, and with that, I am proposing three dates and times, and I'm asking you to review that. They would be Thursday, December 6th after 2:00 p.m., Monday, December 10th after 2:00 p.m., Thursday, December 13th after 2:00 p.m.
Next week would be better for me, so, either one. This week is...
You said on the 10th, 2:00 p.m.?
Anytime after 2:00 p.m. seemed like it was open for some, and then Thursday, unless you have another date that you would like to confirm too, but I figured if I get three dates out there...
I'm okay with the last two dates.
The 10th would work best.
10th, yeah. Ms. Walla, still checking?
I'm thinking that they all work except Thursday, when I checked.
So, 10th will work, 2:00 p.m.?
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like 10th at 2:00 p.m.
Reed will send an invite, I would imagine.
Pardon?
Will you send an invite?
Yes, we will send an invite to all the members of the landfill study.
At 2:00?
It, that's what I was just going to ask. Do you want to start at 2:00? Would that be okay with everybody, or do you need a little bit later in the, in the afternoon?
What kind of timeframe are you expecting for this?
I'm going to defer to Director Zeroff.
Excuse me, I guess it depends, President Decker and Commissioner, I guess it depends, you know, what, if you want to go through the study, the site study that we did, I can sure have the representative or consultant be here for that discussion. You requested the meeting, so I guess, kind of, if you want to give me an outline, we can sure maybe give you an idea.
Mr. President, Ms. Winkle did a pretty good presentation two weeks ago for us, so I don't know if we need to spend extra money to have another presentation of that type for us.
Yeah.
For everybody else, but I thought it was a very good presentation.
I think we just had, we just have some questions that we need to ask of yourself and Mr. Prowse and staff.
Okay.
To have you present, so.
So, I would think an hour or so maybe would be...
Hour and a half, maybe.
Yeah, hour, I could, I could proceed an hour.
And I guess fits the location, if you want anything presented or just the discussion.
Yeah. I think we can just have them right here in the commission chambers, right here.
So, I guess I'm just asking if you want to start at 2:00, or would you like to start later in the afternoon due to work schedules, or what you would like me to initiate at?
I'm going to suggest 3:00.
3:00, 3:00 p.m. work with everybody?
3:00 p.m. work.
I'm pretty busy.
Well, I know, I'm...
I haven't checked that schedule.
3:00 p.m.
So, I'm going to confirm...
3:00 p.m., all right.
I will defer to Attorney Murtha. Do I need a motion on that? I noted, I, okay, thank you. And I'm, I've completed my reports then.
Excuse me, President Decker, anything specific, Attorney Murtha or myself, no? We'll have all the documents there.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay, last report will be by City Attorney Murtha, it's a taxi cab.
Members of the commission, I suppose this isn't so much as a report, but a request for direction, and this is coming before you because the, you've had members of the public, taxi cab licensees themselves come to commission meetings and express concern to you about taxi cab regulations, and specifically with regards to the fact that by local ordinance, the city regulates taxi cabs. However, by state statute, the city is not allowed to regulate what is referred to as transportation network providers, which are the Ubers and Lifts, that type of, that type of structure. So, state statute says political subs you may not regulate, the state will, but taxi cabs, cities are free to regulate, and you do. And these taxi cab licensees have expressed concerns that they are, one, in a competitive disadvantage with these type of, this different type of transportation network company, that they're incurring additional cost because of the additional regulations by the city, and in addition, many of them have expressed that they feel that the taxi cab ordinance itself is, is not being enforced. I know that you've heard from Chief Dossinger, again, providing comments to these that say it can be, it can be a difficult thing to enforce these particular provisions as they relate to, is somebody operating an unauthorized taxi cab, because you need that reasonable suspicion to stop somebody, and how do you, and how do you know? So, as far as enforcing the, do you need a license for this type of service, that can have its difficulties. And so because of all of these concerns and these discussions that have been occurring at both the staff...
these discussions that have been occurring at both the staff level, by members of the public that I've been bringing to you, we're providing, we're bringing this to and saying and asking for direction. What would you like us to do? Would you like us to, one, bring forward a repeal of the taxi cab ordinance? Would you like us to, two, bring forward amendments to the taxi cab ordinance? And do you have particular areas you would like us to focus on? Or three, and this is the third option I'm throwing out there as a, in reference to a conversation I just had with Mr. Gah earlier today, he said, well, you know, it is time, it is legislation time. Should, should one of the options be maybe petitioning our legislatures, legislators for saying that that legislation which prohibits political subs from regulating transportation network providers, is that something that should be relooked at by the legislature? And maybe, maybe that is not a, that shouldn't be a statewide prohibition? Is that something that we, we should be pursuing? So those are three proactive options. And of course, there is, there is the fourth option, which is to say, we understand these concerns, however, we are satisfied with the status quo. And so that is the reason for bringing it before you.
So I know I had, I have stated in the past that we have something that's on the books and it's unenforceable. I see no point in it being on the books. So either we need to amend it, that we can enforce it, we need to go to the legislators and have them help us, or we need to strike it from our books.
Mr. President, I, I would like to see us, see if it's going to go to the legislature this year. I think there's probably concern in a lot of the communities between the taxi owners, departments, and Lyft and Uber drivers. If they don't bring it up to the state level, then maybe there's not a problem with it. But if you own a taxi company and so on, I think that should be a concern of theirs, to do something at the state level.
One of the biggest complaints that I've heard, though, is the, the regulation of these party buses or the, the large buses, the, the, I guess, the limo services, as they would classify, be it an actual limousine or a larger bus, and the enforcement on, on those type of vehicles. And I guess that's my concern, is if we're limiting, we only have a few individuals adhering to our rules and other people are breaking the law and we're not enforcing it, or it's not enforceable because of, you know, lack of staff, or it's just, it's one of those things that, as Mrs. Murtha said, the presumption of something illicit going on, and we just can't have police officers chasing limos around town, assuming that something's illicit going on inside of a limo, or... So again, I'll just state if, we need, we need to either enforce it or, or take it off, off the books. I'm okay with Mr. Steiner's suggestion to wait if it comes up in the legislature.
Are they going to look at the...
I have no idea.
Are they going to look at limos and taxi cabs, or are we just talking Lyft and Uber?
I think they'll probably just be looking at Lyft and Uber.
So that really doesn't address this issue then, unless we bring it up, which...
Right.
I don't think the state's going to want to start enforcing taxi regulations either.
All right.
Lyft and Uber is just a different animal, so. Have we looked at what everybody else does in the state?
There is, well, there is obviously, there's consistency of, with regards to the Uber and Lyft, because no political subdivisions are allowed. And there are municipalities that do have the taxi cab ordinance.
And I'm guessing the requirements in here that are causing hardship to the taxi drivers is the insurance requirement, would be my guess.
That was one of, that was one of the issues that was raised by, I believe, when Mr. Dill appeared before you, the expense of the insurance.
And that was a requirement because of our, our license?
Really? So, yes.
No, it's requirement from the state, too.
The amount of coverage they have to have is a state requirement? Is that correct?
Well, it would be a dual, I mean, so the, they would have a dual requirement between state and the local.
So we require an additional insurance to what the state requires them to have?
That would be an area that I could explore. I haven't yet.
I believe we require a higher amount than the state. And our discussion on that was based on the amount of people that are in these vehicles, and our desire to protect those people in event of accidents. So there's enough money there to fund future family problems, or, you know, for worse than that. I believe that.
I guess my concern is if we have a few people that are adhering to it, that are actually going through the process, and we have others that are skirting the law because they know it's not enforceable, where we, we can't regulate them, then we're, we either need to strike it so everybody's on the same playing field, or we need to...
Are you talking about insurance requirements?
No, I'm talking just the, the requirement, especially for the limousines and the, and the buses.
I, I don't know, I don't have any idea of how many Lyft or Uber drivers are, are in the city.
I think Uber...
Dozen, maybe.
Yeah.
There's a dozen probably total.
Yeah, and I think Uber just was approved for Dickinson.
It was, yeah.
But it's been Lyft for a year now or two, so a majority of them.
And we can't address that, it's just...
We're going to open up something here, if, I mean, we're going to start looking at these type of things, we're going to open up a can of worms. And, you know, that's my concern. Not saying whether it's right or wrong, but, you know, we might have to take a look at some of it. But when we start interfering with a person's right to work and charge them whatever they want, that's a problem.
I mean, for me, I guess, is, we don't want taxi companies operating here without us knowing. So we have to have some kind of licensing requirement. That's my personal opinion.
If you're a Uber...
I mean, Lyft and Uber, we can't do anything about, so.
If you're an Uber or Lyft operator, they would have their own insurance above what their...
Well, Lyft and Uber requires them to carry a certain amount of liability insurance, yeah, correct.
And if there's a guy out there that says, hey, I'm Uber, and he's not, that's probably nothing that we can do. That's his problem.
And there's been cases around the country where Uber driver gets in an accident, I mean, the occupants not only sue the driver, they also sue Uber. So, you know, so that's a different, little bit different animal, but...
And the driver's not going to have anything, because his personal insurance, they're going to step in.
No.
That's liberty of service.
So, so as far as the party buses, do we know that there's party buses operating without a license and insurance?
I would have to...
Or limousines? I mean, is that, is that the concern? I'm trying to figure out the concern here.
That, I believe that that has been a concern that has been raised, or at least perceived by some of the taxi cab licensees. However, are, as far as has the, has the city personnel seen it? That would be something I'd have to refer to the, yeah, refer to the police department.
Well, we have Captain Ciani here, so.
We have had multiple complaints about the party buses throughout town, but we've never verified whether they're licensed or not. The licensing that the city does is basically for taxi service. And I think the citizens of Dickinson expect some governmental oversight of the taxi services. We put this into place back in the boom, because anybody and their brother would come into town, slap taxi on their car, and start picking up people and taking fares. So we had to come up with something, and this was the only thing that actually made sense. So I'm not sure if you want to completely conact the ordinance or adjust the insurance requirement. I don't know. But I think when people call a taxi, they expect that taxi to have some oversight by us. And Uber, they're taking a chance. They know that when they call Uber. That's personal driver, personal vehicle, so.
I guess, but my question is, though, on the limousines and the, and the buses, how can you, as law enforcement, enforce our ordinance?
We cannot. The only thing we can verify is if they have the, the license in the window in a prominently, prominently displayed area. So we can verify that they've been licensed, but to actually make the stop on the bus, we'd have to have grounds to make the stop. It would actually have to be some type of sting operation or something where you rent the bus with officers and determine if they're actually conducting business without a license very likely.
I don't know if there's more than three, four, five limos.
I'm not sure how many limos we have in town. I, I thought there was only one at one point, but...
Yeah.
They show up here and there, so.
Well, maybe we, what, what we need to do in, I'm looking here at, see the chauffeur's, the chauffeur's license. I guess that's maybe one of the biggest concerns that I've heard from the public, is that in the, you know, the party buses, how are we enforcing that they're all adhering to our policy? So.
Nearly impossible to do without some type of operation.
So then, oh, we have something that is nearly impossible to enforce on our books. We have a requirement that we can enforce. I'm not saying the regular taxis, we need to strike it, but we need, maybe need to look at this, the party buses. And then you're taking, you're taking the liability of renting a party bus, and that's by renting the party bus, that you're taking on that responsibility. I'm, I guess I would look for staff to, to maybe research that, that chapter, and, and give us some, some guidance, and, and get with the police department.
Well, I mean, they haven't actually seen anyone operating without a license. This is hearsay. We've had a lot of accusations on a multiple, multitude amount of things. I, I just, I don't know how far we want to dig into something that we don't even know exists. Because we've kind of had the battle of, of the taxi, different companies, and they throw out a lot of accusations. So I don't know how much time is worth spending on this.
There's a lot of things in ordinances that are put in there, not to be implemented and driven home right away, but they're there in the event something does come back.
Right.
Take a look at our travel trailer or camper trailer ordinance. You can be on the street for so long, or they got to be out of there. We don't intentionally go out and say, today, we're going to go out and take it 200 or those there.
Right.
But if you get a complaint from a neighbor, this is what our ordinance says, now we can go and approach them.
And Captain Ciani, I mean, if you, if they're breaking the law, or they run a red light, you're going to stop them and check for that license, is that correct?
We would, especially if we're aware of the problem with it.
And...
It's kind of a reactive ordinance.
Right. And to date, to date, there's been no issues that you're aware of?
Well, I haven't looked recently, but I haven't seen, seen any complaints that I know of that have come recently, so.
I think my suggestion would be to leave it as is and watch, watch the legislature and maybe revisit this in, in the coming, coming months.
I guess, my understanding why I had staff look into this is not because of Lyft and Uber. I have received no complaints from, about Lyft and Uber, zero. What I've received complaints about is party buses or limousines operating without licenses. While there are some that are buying the license and adhering to our ordinance, there are others that are not.
How many can that be? I, you know, I just...
I don't know. I don't know.
There's quite a few party buses in this town, and some private ones, too. You know, are those...
So that's the concern.
Are the private owners using them for their own use, or are they...
They're abiding by the state laws, you know?
But that's why I'm saying, we have on our books an ordinance that they're supposed to adhere to, but we're not enforcing it.
You know, and I think in the past, Mr. Dill's complaint was, he has a party bus, or sober bus, he calls it, I believe.
Hmm.
And we've classified that. He pays the taxi fee, he pays the higher insurance. And then you've got, let's say, the next guy that's got a party bus is not paying the taxi fee, and he's not paying the insurance.
It's not a level playing field. I understand.
And I think that's where the issue's been.
Let's see what the state does.
I mean, I, I'm not so opposed to relaxing the insurance requirement if it's, if we're higher than the state.
We, we do that to protect the citizens.
Well, I, I get that, and that's why the state has the ordinance, that has sentry code also, but...
State is more of a minimum requirement.
Yeah, but if they're not getting a license, they're not having the insurance. We're not making them require the insurance, so. I'm, I'm open to looking at that portion of it, but...
I am as well.
I guess if we could get some, you know, statistics of how many limousines, party buses, we think that are operating within the city. And Mrs. Murtha, if you could look at, how big a difference to commissioners' concerns on the insurance level, to see if we can adjust that possibly, and, and this can come back in the new year. Give you guys enough time.
We'll do our best.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Captain.
Okay, we have nothing from fire or police tonight. Engineering?
Thank you, President Decker. A couple items today for engineering. The first one is amendment to a task order for Apex Engineering. Last month, we went through a selection process for several engineering projects, one of them being the upgrade for Lift Station 1. And for reference, Lift Station 1 is the lift station by the WTA dam just south of Broadway by the TNC Park, headed custom to Centerville. Serves a quite a large area of South Canadian City.
Sorry about that. So Lift Station 1 needs to be upgraded, and Apex Engineering was selected to do the construction engineering of that project. They were previously selected to do the design engineering, and that is about 95% complete right now. So Apex Engineering, again, was selected. For those of you who looked at the agreement, let me pull that up here. There's one item that is not specific to Lift Station 1, and that's $14,900 for facility plan and documentation for clean water SRF funding. Several years ago, probably in 2013, we had put together a facility plan for all the sewer projects that we anticipated doing at the onset of the boom. What's recently happened here in the last year or so, that rate for those SRF loans has been decreased by the state from 2.5% down to 2%. So we want to create a new facility plan, put on all the projects that we either know we're going to do, or think we might want to do, to be able to capture that, that new lower interest rate of 2%. So Apex had done this, for this in the past, and it involves putting together a description of the project, some financials for the project, and then making sure that the projects are bid with the requirements required by SRF. We anticipate doing that with this project. It's, you know, buy some American Steel, Davis Bacon Wages, things like that need to be incorporated into the project. So we wanted to make sure that all of our sewer projects moving forward can capitalize on that new rate. So incorporated that facility plan into this, into this agreement as well, so. City staff has reviewed this scope of work and the contract, and recommend approval. With that, I'd open it up for any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kupas on this task order?
Mr. President, make a motion, we approve the amendment to task order number 22.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Kupas? Go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a report on the Crooked Crane Trail, Phase Two.
Thank you, President Decker. Yesterday, Assistant Engineer Loretta Marchik and I were able to make it down to Bismarck to present to the, it's the Outdoor Heritage Fund Advisory Board, which is an advisory board to the Industrial Commission of State North Dakota, who administers grants for the Outdoor Heritage Fund. And the Outdoor Heritage Fund has several directives mainly related to having people be able to go out and enjoy the outdoors and recreational opportunities. So as part of our task force that we have relating to trails and sidewalks at the city, the Crooked Crail, Crooked Crane the Crooked Crane Trail Phase 2 connection quickly rose to the top of our list as the most important trail project that the city should undertake. The handout that I think all of you have is what we put together. It was our short PowerPoint to this advisory board, showing them the benefits of this project. And already last night, we had gotten an email back from that advisory board. This is an estimated one point six million dollar project, and we requested one point two million dollars, which is their maximum match of seventy-five percent. And we were not officially awarded, but that advisory board is going to recommend to the Industrial Commission to fund our project wholly. So, we believe shortly we'll have a one point two million dollar grant to help fund the construction of the Crooked Crane Trail Phase 2, which will be a connection from State Avenue at the new bridge, all the way up past the dike and out past the Game and Fish Building and to the lake. And it'll connect all the way to Phase 1 of Crooked Crane Trail, which is the one point eight mile loop. This is about one point six miles of trail here, so... A very exciting project that we hope to get into design very shortly and build still yet this year. Our last remaining hurdle is still getting final approval from Burlington Northern. As much of this trail will need to be constructed within their right-of-way. We think we've met their requirements, maintaining a fifty-foot separation from the tracks and eliminating a crossing, which we contend that we've done by building the State Avenue Bridge. We've eliminated that crossing, so... We hope to hear a favorable response from them in the next month or two and move forward with the design and construction of this, so... Exciting news.
Looks very promising. That's great. Great asset to the city once everything's connected.
It will be. We really tried to sell it as, and this board has a tough job. They have to weigh upland restoration projects and wetland restoration projects, dam repair projects, tree plantings, and trails like this. And the Midora Foundation has a really exciting project with zip lines and everything. And so, really hard to compare apples to apples. So, this advisory board is tasked with looking at a lot of things all across the state. And I think this one really rose to the top because we could connect it to so many people that are going to use this. We have a community of twenty-five thousand people in a lake a mile and a half away, and there really is no pedestrian connection, so we tried to really sell it on that, that the people are gonna benefit so much from this project, so... It's exciting. We hope to start working on it soon.
Good job.
Great to hear.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Kubis?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We have nothing from Public Works, Planning, Building and Codes. We are on the public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If you have a public issue of city concern that was not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concern as a commission. If you have a concern, please come forward.
Yes, I do. On the army buses and taxis, you do have a...
Please state your name.
My name is Marvin Dill. I'm the CEO of Sober Bus. And you were wondering about whether you had some way of finding out if they did have the license to operate in the city, and you do, and it's already in the ordinance. It is on, let me get my glasses on here, Section thirty-six point oh-four point oh-nine oh. And paragraph D, each taxi shall, must have a taxi identification number issued association with the taxicab business owner prominently displayed on the outside of the vehicle taxi, on the right, the left front, the rear fenders of the taxi, and on the trunk of the taxi in the front and on the sides approved by the city administrator or the design. That is the license that is issued by the city.
And that includes the party buses?
That includes the party buses and limousines.
License as a taxi?
Yep. It's license, that is a, it's about a six by eight white sticker. And it's supposed to be on each fender and on the back of the vehicle. And my buses, my wife's buses, and the only one that I know of that, as far as your party buses, that have them. Two's Construction don't have them. SM Fencing, which is Prairie Bell, doesn't have them. Knight Ride Transportation does not have them, nor does Rockstar. Rockstar has the number in the window on, by the door, but it's not on, on the fenders.
Mr. Dill, how many limousines or party buses you think are operating within the city?
Well, you have, we have three. Rockstar has one, so that's four. Knight Ride has two. SM Fencing has one. Two's Construction has one. And I noticed there's two other limousines that come in and out, and I believe one of them is owned by Dan Porter.
Are some of those actually for-profit, like Two's? Does he just take his employees on those buses, or...
They do take employees out, but they do rent them out. You can go to Two's and rent that bus for your own personal, or you can rent it out for, do what I do.
Okay.
But the other problem is, is with the state law, no one has ever asked to see my driver's license. State law requires that if you have more than fifteen or more people in occupancy in the back of that vehicle, you are required to have a passenger endorsement on your driver's license. And if the vehicle is over sixteen, I mean, twenty-six thousand pounds, you are required to have another endorsement on the license. So, those things should be checked too, because, for instance, the one up in New York, they had that accident and killed them twenty people. He wasn't, he didn't have the proper endorsements.
Well, thank you for bringing this issue to us, and we will investigate.
But this is the part of it...
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public has a concern within the city? Please come forward. Seeing no one else has any concerns, that we're not on our agenda. Commissioners, do you have anything? This is your time, and there is not a executive session this evening.
Just one, Mr. President. At the end of the last meeting, I asked if we could have a report on the stop signs at State Avenue and 12th from the study that KLJ did, and the recommendation was that we remove the two, two of them, the one on the west side of State and the one on the east side. Excuse me, no, north and south, north and south, so that the traffic would flow more freely going in. We got three, we got a stoplight, stop sign, and another stop sign within three blocks of the high school. And I've been intentionally going over there the last few days, and it's a block long, the traffic there.
You're talking on 12th there, on top of the hill?
On 12th, excuse me, yeah, on 12th and going north on State. And they're all stopping one time, one time, one time. And so, by removing those, I think it might get the traffic to their... I think we need to at least try it out for a while, see what happens.
Mr. Kubis?
We have to discuss this with the executive team. I don't think we have support of the police department on this. For a lot of the same reason you brought up, with the school coming out. It does slow traffic down, and that's absolutely what the KLJ report showed, that there's an overall increased delay, you know, per-vehicle delay of time getting through that intersection. We do have a project coming up with the DOT on 12th Street, nothing on State, but I certainly think we could address it at that time, if it's a matter of pulling stop signs. I think, you know, the reason they were put up was understanding there's gonna be an increase in delay on State Avenue, was that at the time, the folks traveling on 12th Street might sit there for five minutes. And it was still less of a delay than a hundred cars on State Avenue having to stop for eight or ten seconds apiece. But 12th, at a point, 12th Street traffic almost became futile to get onto State Avenue, especially making that left-hand turn. So, it's certainly a trade-off, and what I'd like to do, if that'd be all right with the commission, is to wait for the project coming up that will be built in nineteen and take another look at it then, you know, this coming, this coming year. And if we still feel that's the right move to pull the stop signs on State Avenue, I think that would be a good time to do it, as we will readdress striping out there and things like that, so...
I'm okay with that. As long as we address it.
As long as we're talking about traffic. Not to make this any longer, but I have received multiple calls and one email about the lights on 22 on South. And if we are going to put, ever gonna put lights down by the loaf and jug there on Eighth and 22. There's still, I know what it warrants, but there's still a lot of concerns of the the speed that people are entering our city at. They're not adhering to the law, you know, coming from the south going north into our city. They're, they're coming in at fifty-five miles an hour, and they're, they're not slowing down.
I certainly hope that one of these years, we can get those signals in. We pushed for them to get installed in 2018 with the project we did on Eighth Street. The DOT, again, had looked at it with the project they're proposing to do next year. And we're just, we're just shy of the warrants to warrant a signal being installed on Eighth. But it is, there's a lot of factors that make it a more dangerous intersection. We go from four lanes down to two lanes as you're traveling south. There's a speed reduction as you're traveling north. And then there's just, you know, more traffic than there used to be, especially coming from the west side with the building that's happened since, since that area developed, now that, now it's really filled out, so... And then depending on the ebb and flow of the Heartland Village Mobile Home Court, that can add a lot of traffic just there too. So I certainly hope, and we stay in contact with the DOT on these things, that we'll get that one day soon. Unfortunately, it might be three consecutive years of construction at that intersection before it happens, because we just had it tore up last year. It'll be under less construction this year, but there'll be construction this coming year. And then, in hopefully a subsequent year shortly, we'll tear it up again and install signals, so... And a roundabout is also an option the DOT is favorable to at that intersection, which I think would serve the purpose. It definitely helps slow people down as they do come into the entrance of your city. So, there are some definite benefits there.
Well, it's, you know, as long as we're addressing that issue. I would just hate to see at any intersection a terrible accident happen, so... Any, Ms. Kubis?
One quick update, and it was, it was on our Facebook page, but we did install probably much belatedly. We installed a four-way stop sign at kind of the main intersection of Charbonneau's. And so I think that was an addition that was well overdue. Most people stopped anyway because it's quite congested there with the vehicles that are parked, so... And what we're working on right now is to get some of the flashing stop signs that have been in place for four years now at some of these other locations. I think people are kinda used to it now. I hope they're, they're trained. So we're gonna put some of those new stop signs on, what is it, First and Fourth, so...
Good deal. Anyone else? Any concerns? Commissioners? Points?
I did have one brought up to me a couple times in the past, and it had to do with animal shelters in the ordinance. So that's just one thing that I'm hearing is gonna be coming up in front of us throughout the length of time animal care. And the volunteers that help out at the shelter have a great concern about that. So that's one thing that I've been hearing about, just mainly from my, and the animal rescue. So, I know that's been, there's a lot of them that are concerned about that, but...
Anything else, Commissioners? All right, to look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We are adjourned.